Okay, great. All right, we'll get started and Ava should be on any minute so she can just jump in as we go. Okay, great. All right, we're going to call to order the Narragansett Town Council Work Session Meeting, February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six oh one P M. We have a work session with the town council to review and discuss the results of the two thousand twenty-one American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Community Survey and potential department projects with G Z A slash I Parametrics, Department Heads and Community Members. So I just want to thank Chris Spagnoli from our Finance Department for getting this organized and put together. She's going to be pretty much running this work session for us tonight. And I also want to thank Sam Bell from G Z A and Jeff Stevens from I Parametrics for joining us. After we hear from Chris, Sam and Jeff, the council will have some time to ask questions from G Z A and I Parametrics, as well as any department heads, questions for Chris, questions for our town manager Jim Tierney, and then we'll also have time reserved to go to the public as well. We definitely want to get public input as much as possible tonight. We'll also be having public hearings a little bit later down the road. But for tonight, that's going to be the general process. So Chris, go ahead and take your way. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Pugh, and good evening to you and the council members. On behalf of the town manager, I'd just like to take a moment and introduce Jeff and Sam. Jeff Stevens is I Parametrics Vice President of Emergency Management, and his role, he works closely with clients to improve their resilience and enhance recovery efforts. Jeff is a Certified Emergency Manager and FEMA Master Exercise Practitioner. He holds numerous Incident Management Team certifications and is also a volunteer firefighter. Mr. Sam Bell is a Senior Planner with G Z A with eighteen years of leadership and management experience, covering natural hazard mitigation and resiliency planning, hazard mitigation assistance, environmental planning and permitting, community education and outreach, and disaster resiliency research. He has extensive experience providing technical assistance to federal and state agencies, U S territories and counties on disaster recovery, resiliency projects designed to protect critical facilities, public and private infrastructure, and residents. They've been very helpful with us getting reimbursement through FEMA, and they're always, they always look at ways that we can improve our reimbursements, and now they're helping us with our ARPA money. So on that note, I'd like to turn it over to Jeff and Sam. I don't know who has the PowerPoint. If you need me to share my screen or Sam or Jeff?
I'll, I'll show my screen. We'll start with survey results, Chris, and then we can talk, we'll switch into kind of your PowerPoint where it talks everything. So, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us, Chris. Thank you for those wonderful introductions. We really, Narragansett holds a special place in my heart. It was actually, I, I, my family and I go to the beach there every summer, and also that you're the, one of my first communities when I first started in emergency management, Rhode Island Emergency Management, back in the, the days of Chief Cotter, you know, working, working on a number of plans. So what I'm going to do is I'll share my screen quickly. And, you know, I know that all of you have, just make sure this shares. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah.
And it's, I think I've shared the wrong screen, so let me reshare the right screen. So. Okay. Now, you should be seeing the PowerPoint today. And we, we provided a very detailed PowerPoint here that walks you through the survey results that we did. One of the most important things when we think about the American Rescue Plan Act is the engagement of the public, you know, and making sure that, you know, we're, we're going to be as creative and as transformative as possible with your allocation, you know, and there's some real benefits that came out within the final rule. With the final rule, and we'll talk about this a little bit more in detail, has put in a standard allowance, so any community less than ten million dollars can take all of the funds as revenue loss. The idea is to streamline reporting and to improve the ability to spend the funds a little bit more quickly. So we have the opportunity to take all of your funds for revenue loss and really target them to where they need to go as it relates to solving issues within the community. And I think that's one of the most important things that you're going to hear me say over and over again this evening, is that the goal of these dollars isn't to necessarily spread them around to everywhere. The goal is to, to solve problems that were caused or exacerbated by COVID or have been underlying issues from an infrastructure perspective, and anytime that you can use these dollars to really solve two issues at once, you know, so we'll talk about some water and sewer infrastructure possibilities later. If it not only improves the water and sewer infrastructure, but it improves your disaster resilience from hurricanes or flooding that you've seen, that's an awesome investment for you to consider. So kind of a quick overview of, of the surveys. We sent two distinct surveys out. One was a resident survey, had about twenty-four questions on it, and we were able to get two hundred and three respondents. And, and these individuals ran the gambit from full-time employed to retired, you know, there's a strong retired population that responded all the, all the way through the demographic, you know, the, the age group distributions. And we also had a fourteen-question business and nonprofit survey that we were able to receive twenty-four respondents to, and, and got some good data out of this. You're going to see as I flip through, and this is all included in your packet, I think you all have copies of this survey. And my intention tonight, as I said, is not to go through these line by line, but you have every bit of detail that we were provided. You know, so with some call-out boxes in terms of here. So if I skip past something, it's just because there's not a lot of things to highlight. But just to kind of give you, you know, that overall sense, this is what I was talking about before in terms of most respondents were employed full-time or retired. You know, there was, you know, some detail on what led to unemployment, some of the health and medical. I think the biggest thing, when we think about, you know, family and well-being and, and some of the challenges that your community experienced, the biggest by far was really this, you know, kind of felt like you couldn't leave your house or apartment. So there's some, you know, potentially underlying kind of mental health challenges as it relates to some of these pieces. I think that will abate over time, but just flagged it for, for your interest. You know, as we go through, you know, there was also some concern about, you know, children being left behind, you know, and effect, the, the effect on the pandemic overall, as it relates to, you know, some of the impacts. And I'm just going to kind of fast forward, you know, again, here's that isolation, you know, lack of trust and information. And this is just kind of background, you know, as we go, go through, and you'll be able to see some of these things. Where I do want to stop, you know, is really at question twelve on the individual survey. Because as we think about how do you want to invest the funds for ARPA, these were the top four: infrastructure, water and sewer infrastructure, housing and small business support. So on an individual basis, the members of your community that responded to the survey, this was their top four. You know, they didn't really feel from a prioritization perspective that a court backlog or, you know, any crime reduction activities were, were critically important. But these were the, you know, these ones, you know, infrastructure, housing and small business support was, was really important. One thing that did come up throughout all of the comments, you know, not in terms of a direct way, but it was enough that I feel I should mention it, is there was a notable mentions of the Galilee Plant and development, you know, near the Port of Galilee, you know, in that area. You know, so there was a lot of folks that did skip questions and preferred not to answer. You know, English was primarily the language that was responded to, even we did, even though we did offer this in multiple languages. You know, there was really, you know, nothing of note as it relates to the other pieces. And, you know, you can see where respondents got a lot of their information, you know, they really, a lot of them did get information from government entities. And then, you know, most, most of the households, you know, an over eighty-five percent, more than eighty-five percent indicated that they do have enough money to cover one month's of expense. But there is a portion of your community that doesn't, you know, that are, are still having some economic impacts from the overall pandemic. Any questions before I move on to some of the business results? Okay. You know, when we got into the businesses, we really, you know, a lot of the respondents notably were businesses with a median revenue between a hundred and five hundred thousand. You know, so they, it was a lot of your smaller businesses, you know, and a couple nonprofits that were there that, that did respond. Again, only twenty-four, but, but of note, you know, many did experience a decrease in sales and, and revenue. You know, some of them had to close a location. So. The other thing that I saw as an undercurrent on some of the business and nonprofit piece is finding employees, you know, and finding folks that were willing to work was a bit of a challenge for, for multiple organizations. Kind of going through, I, I think the, the next big point I want to make here is, you know, just going to go to question eleven. You know, then when we think about investment priorities and possibilities for small businesses, you know, their top three supports small business tourism, economic development. You know, everything else in terms of their investment priorities were, were evenly distributed as not a priority or do not invest. Again, this is one where I highlighted, you know, those that, that answered, you know, did develop Galilee to support fishermen, reduce crime, affordable housing, small business support, access, you know, and emergency preparedness within those areas, you know, things that you can do. But overall, you know, it's, again, support the port of Galilee and, you know, kind of reduce some of the overall red tape issues and provide some direct support. That's, uh, that was the survey kind of results. Again, the individual details should be in your packets. But are there any questions or concerns with, you know, some of the surveys, survey data thus far?
I have a question. I was just, I was just wondering how the survey was publicized particularly to the residents so that they knew to, you know, respond to it.
Want me to hit that one up, Jeff?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we did have it on the website. I believe it was about a month? Was it a little over a month?
It was more than a month. We've, we've left it up for quite some time. I, I think actually it was more than even six weeks.
Okay. Yeah, and it went out over social media. And then we announced it. I, I don't know if we announced it at a town council meeting, I do not recall, but it definitely went over social media and it was on, posted on the website.
Do we know, like, I, I don't know if we've ever done a survey before, not since I've been on the council, but do we know if the respondent number was typical of what we would get? Does anybody know the answer to that?
I do not.
Yeah, I don't either.
Yeah, I just want to jump on that one as well. I was going to ask Mr. Stevens a similar question. Mr. Stevens, you guys do, are you working with other municipalities right now?
We, we are throughout, yeah.
How does the two hundred and three responses and the twenty-four business responses, how does that compare to other towns proportionally? Not necessarily raw numbers, but just general.
Oh, absolutely. But proportionally, that was, that was actually pretty good. You know, not, I, I'll admit, not the best, but also, but better than average, especially for, you know, some of our clients within the Northeast. You know, I, I will say proportionally, you're right in line in terms of the percentage of impact, your percentage of engagement. So.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Susan, you're muted.
Hi, Jeff. I, I was going to ask the same thing. I mean, we didn't announce it, not that I can remember at the council meeting, and I know I took the survey, I know residents had asked, but out of fifteen thousand residents, it just seems like a very small sampling, twenty-four people on the business side, two hundred out of fifteen thousand, you know, I am, I have to say, I'm thrilled that you, you know, you're helping with the survey. I'm disappointed at the opportunity that people lost to, to weigh in. I, I think it's really, really a small, small amount of people.
I did want to, I, I want to add too, I, I did forget that I did connect with the Chamber of Commerce, and we went with an, a mail, she did a mail out for people registered in her area through email, and I also had some businesses that, with the licenses. So then I also went out with an email to, to businesses. I'm saying both went out with them.
Yeah. And, and I, I, I will say, I think that the outreach that was done was consistent, if not better, than some of our other clients, you know, to make sure that we got a number of people engaged, you know, as many people as engaged as possible.
All right, actually, I should have done this at the beginning of the meeting, but I just want to take a second because Jeff, you're probably wondering who everybody is as we ask questions. So let me just go around real quick and introduce the council members so you're not wondering who you're talking to.
I had the website up at the same time.
So we'll go around real quick. I'm Jesse Pugh, the council president, and we'll go around the table.
Hi, Susan Cicilline Bonanno, President Pro-Town.
Ava, you want to say hello?
Uh, hold on. I'm having issues.
Patrick Murray, Town Council.
Ev Kopeck, Town Council. We could hear you, Ava.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so I must be on both because it's shown on me, on mute. All right, so my name is Ava, just just getting one of the council members. Thank you for being here and thank you for going over that report with us.
All right, thank you. And also just one more note for the public. I do see a hand up. We're going to definitely take comment tonight. We're just going to save that till later, later on, so we can go to the public in full as opposed to kind of piecemeal. So we'll definitely do that. But Jeff, you could go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. You know, so as I mentioned, and, and we'll switch over to Chris, the, the PowerPoint that you shared. You know, just, let me just bring that up for everybody.
Oh, you, you, are you going to bring it up?
Yeah, I have it up right here.
Oh, you are so fast. Okay.
I, you know.
All right, so I guess I'm on. Okay, so as you know, this is the ARPA Capital Budget and Survey Results Work Session. I just wanted to review the amounts of funding we had. So we had one million, six hundred, six thousand, five hundred fifty-seven and change in municipal funds, and then in the county funds, two million, nine hundred eighty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-three for a total of just about, just under four point six million. Again, these funds have to be obligated by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and spent by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
If I could just make one point there too, you know, as it relates to the obligation and spent dollars, you know, we never would want to think about holding on to any of these dollars if we don't absolutely know for definite that you're going to spend those dollars by twenty twenty-six. You know, and I think that's where the revenue loss will really benefit the town.
So I've gone over these allowable rules and what it could be used on before that was in the interim rule. It still takes place, yet the negative impact, premium pay for essential workers, revenue loss for governmental services, and investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. But now with the final rule that was adopted on January sixth, two thousand twenty-two, with an effective date of April first, two thousand twenty-two, and the final rule, as Jeff was saying, provided for more flexibility, and the most significant change is that we have a standard allowance under revenue loss for up to ten million dollars, which would cover our whole allocation. And both, you know, both amounts of fund amounts can be used under revenue loss, and you provide governmental services. Important to remember, as Jeff said, transparency and community collaboration is important and shall be documented. Projects should be the most beneficial to the community and offer the most economic impact. And again, they cannot be used to fund tax cuts or pension fund contributions.
And that's even with the, the standard allowance, you know, that's, I think that's a very bright line thing that Treasury has maintained within their, within the final rule.
So now I'm just going to read the projects for you. So we have H V A C and town hall renovations, including council chambers, the I T office and the building facade, the elevator, the elevator that needs to be fixed. Eastwood Look and Vine Estate Storm Drain System, that's one point five. The extension of the bike path, two million. Network access control enhancements, those are for technology to help with our cybersecurity, one hundred thousand consolidation of the fire administration building, and building inspection complex, two point five million renovations to Firehouse Two and Three at six hundred and fifty thousand. The Four Minute City, twenty thousand. Police has traffic safety with equipment and signage for twenty-five thousand, riot gear, twenty-four thousand. Firearms training enhancement, fifty thousand, thirty-five thousand for the Harbor Master Support. I believe that's a vehicle. We have a new public announcement system for Narragansett Beach of fifteen thousand. An update sales office and public police substation at the Narragansett Beach for two hundred and fifty thousand. Growing Rest Restorations Program. Now, this is the one like Jeff was talking about. Right now, they, we have a, we could be eligible for a grant from Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, six hundred and twenty-five thousand. The Rhode Island D E M grant is six hundred and twenty-five thousand, and then there's still an additional one point two million that we would need for that project. Galilee Pump Station Upgrade, six hundred and thirty thousand. Spray Bridge Pump Station, whoops.
Sorry.
Two hundred thousand. The wastewater outfall restoration, one point five million. Water meter radio read system, one point four million. Whoever's chatting, I can't see my screen good. Water system improvements, one point nine million. Wastewater cybersecurity enhancements, fifty thousand. New library project, one point five million. And then a council member had also requested O P E B contributions, one-time contributions. Those are, are allowable under this ARPA funding. So as you can see, we have many projects. They total almost seventeen million dollars. And we only have four point five plus. So you have your work cut out for you. We have department heads here as well that can expand upon their projects and give a little more detail. I believe you have received some summaries from the town manager before, but I just wanted to give a brief overview. So I don't know if you have any questions at this time.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris. So why don't we go around the council, go in the order we always go in? And everyone can go ahead and ask questions of really anyone. So if you have any questions for Jeff, Sam, Chris, or any department head, go ahead. And, yeah, let's do that. All right, Susan, you want to start off?
So, you know, I looked at the lists of all the different projects, and I was just wondering how they were prioritized and who decided, like, so I saw the bike path was third. Is that in any specific priority order? Or those are just the projects in general, and those would be the ones that the town staff would like to see completed first?
Christine, I'll, I'll take this. Okay. Susan, we had reached out. At one of the requirements for, for the funding was to be transparent and to involve the public and the staff. We reached out to the senior management team and explained to them exactly what we're receiving and asked them to submit their wish list for projects that they feel are necessary. And each department head prepared a summary for each of these projects for consideration. And at this juncture, they're being forwarded to the council as they were last week for the council to review and give feedback to the town staff on their priorities as well.
All right, that, that's helpful. Thanks, Jim. Just to follow up, you say wish list, but it's priorities based on the ARPA requirements as well, like environmental or the emergency management kind of stuff. I mean, it's not just, oh, I, I feel like getting this, and my department needs that because we have some regular funding in our department. So I'm just trying to understand how those projects, you know, came to be. Is it priorities against the requirements of the ARPA requests?
Each department submitted the prior, if, if they had programs or projects that they needed, they feel that needed to get done, each of them assigned the most pressing that they felt may fit into the ARPA funding. There's water, wastewater, broadband infrastructure. They, they're accepted as almost no questions asked. The other projects will have to be considered whether or not they qualify or not. Eventually, when the council determines what is the priority from this list, then we'll have to get some more clarifications on certain projects.
Yeah, like I saw the bike path, and I was wondering, oh, that, would that really be something that could fall into that? So I wasn't sure. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, and I, you know, I, again, we're, we're going to fall under the government services portion of this, the revenue loss, and you provide any government services. Of course, you want it to be around COVID, so, you know, go outside, get fresh air, the environmental impact, you know, sustainability and all, all that. So they all, they all fit under ARPA through the revenue loss category.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Susan?
No, I think that's good. I just wanted to understand with the list really how it was generated. So thanks.
Thanks, Susan. All right, Ava.
Yeah, just a quick question in regards to the list again. So just reviewing that list, does every single one of those items qualify for ARPA funding? Is there anyone that reviewed those and made sure that it, it fit the criteria? I don't know who could answer that for me.
Yes, they all do under the revenue loss. So that we have that ten million dollar allowance. So if we use all our funds under the revenue loss, I mean, obviously, water, wastewater, it would, it would, those fall into line without question. But everything else, like the police with their, you know, safety, public safety, and the fire with expanding the fire station to allow more firefighters to be in there and to fit the equipment, that all fall, it all falls under the revenue loss and can qualify. But there's a lot of projects and a lot of money, and we only have four point five million.
Right, so it's just ranking them.
It is a little, Ava, it is a little tough to hear you now.
I was just saying, so it's going to be basically ranking, but can you hear me now?
Yeah.
So just ranking them and ensuring that, you know, we, ones that have the best impacts for the community.
Right, again, you know, you want to, the most bang for your buck, the one that provides the most for the community at large in safety, in clean water, you know, that's all, all in there. So.
And Chris, if I can.
I'm sorry, okay, go ahead.
No, if I could add one thing as well, I think it's a unique opportunity. Chris touched on it before, and I really want to highlight it, is you can use this money, taking it as revenue loss under that standard allowance, to match other grants as well. So, you know, that's where she had talked a little bit about, you know, one of the, the projects where D E M and R I B would match it. You know, that's just a tremendous opportunity to say, hey, we're going to use somebody else's funds at the same time and make the money go even further. You know, and investments like that, that's what we're talking to all of our communities about. You know, finding those that, that kind of fit within the strategic priorities that you all will lay out from the council perspective, and then finding where you could match and, and almost make this for, you know, almost four point six million. If you could turn it into ten, you know, why, why wouldn't you? Or you could turn it into eight, you know, why wouldn't you? You know, so there may be some opportunities to do things like that. I think that will be unique and should, should definitely take advantage of it.
Yeah, and then just a quick question too. So you're doing this, the surveys with other municipalities. Are you finding similar, you know, wants or the use of them of the ARPA funds? Or are there differences in communities for what they want to use the ARPA funding for?
Yeah, and so it's all different throughout, throughout the country, you know, so we've got clients, you know, we all throughout Rhode Island, New England, Michigan, Kansas, you know, so it's, it really is very local. We're seeing different pieces. And, and one of the unique things about the ARPA legislation is that, you know, with the CARES Act, we saw, you know, that it was all handled through the states, and state by state, it was a little bit different. You know, and, and I think that was, you know, a piece that was an important, you know, that, that was sometimes a challenge, you know, in Rhode Island, you know, you got right at the end an allocation of funding, and you got to put it. Here with the ARPA dollars, the, they were very particular with the legislation to make sure it got in the most local hands, to make the most local decisions on how to spend the money and what was best for the community. To make sure it got in the most local hands, to make the most local decisions on how to spend the money and what was best for the community. Uh, so i- it is, you know, your results didn't, you know, nothing jumped out at me. That I'm like, oh, that's really off the norm from what other people were thinking. But I, I just want us to kind of go back to that idea, it's, it's really, the money is in your hands to, to be. The most transformative within your local conditions. Um, and, and I can't, I can't say that enough, and that was very intentional in, in the legislation.
All right, thanks, Eva. Uh, Dad?
Um, I have a couple of questions. One is, um, I'm a little bit confused about the term revenue loss. Um, I think it's, you know, a technical term in this particular scenario that isn't what I think it is. So could somebody just sort of let me understand that?
You want me to try, Jeff? Give it a go here?
All right, whichever you want.
All right. Well, the, uh, go ahead, Jeff, why don't you just take it?
Yeah, so really what it is, is um, part of ARPA within the, the interim final rule. Uh, or within the legislation was the idea that this money could be used to bolster public sector. Um, revenue loss, so a community had some, you know, lost some revenue on, on the top line. Not individual departments or anything else like that, on the top line, we lost revenue. We needed to bolster government services, make sure that we don't have to deal with budget cuts, you know. Take some of those pieces and, and really the revenue loss dollars, it was. ARPA had a strict, you know, strict guidelines and rules that Chris touched on before, you know, infrastructure, you could only invest in water sewer and broadband. But under revenue loss, now you could do roads and bridges and any general pay go infrastructure, you know, those types of things. So it, it freed up what the money could be used for. With the final rule, they allowed a standard allowance of up to ten million dollars. And they said if, if you have under ten million dollars like you all do, you could treat it all as revenue loss. So it opened the aperture in terms of any general government administrative service. And that's why, you know, and it added that enhancement that we talked about before about. Using it to match against other federal funds, the only thing you can't match against is Medicaid and CHIP. Other than that, if there's another federal grant that's out there that we can get some of these funds for, there's your match. You know, it becomes really an awesome thing.
Thank you.
If I can add a little bit to that as well, so uh, in calculating this revenue loss, I didn't want to get too much into the weeds, that's why I asked Jeff to do it. But in calculating the revenue loss, you were allowed to take a four percent. Um, growth rate year over year, so we had to go back several years. And add in a four percent growth, and that's how we were able to come up with revenue loss. Like Jeff said, you didn't go line by line and say, oh, this department lost this and this one. It was overall big picture with an additional four percent growth figured in. And um, if you look at our budgets, we haven't been up four percent in a while, so.
And now they, yeah.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
We don't even have to do that calculation anymore.
Right.
You know, so that.
So, so you don't really even have to have revenue loss per se?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, they took it as almost like a standard deduction.
Right.
Your tax, your, your personal taxes.
Got it. So, um, in relation to the idea of combining, you know, other grants, et cetera. I'm thinking about the um, infrastructure, the federal infrastructure monies, so you could take. You know, you could take whatever, I don't know, I'm not exactly sure how that's going to be shared out to municipalities, but you could take some of that money. Or, and I think you have to go in and actually apply for those grants, right? So, and not unlike the D E M money, not unlike the um, the infrastructure bank, y- you can do the same thing with that money too, right? That's, that's the idea, once you figure it out. Because, and the reason that I'm asking this is because, you know, first of all, we don't have sixteen million dollars. And second of all, um, you know, some of these, uh, some of the things that were listed here are things that, you know. I think one of them was actually in our capital uh, budget. A couple of them are things that we've heard about before and I assumed would be coming up eventually. We do have, you know, some significant amount of money in our, um. In our, in our general fund, you know, and so, so I'm thinking in terms of, and I, I assume you are too. Of how to best utilize uh, this fund in conjunction with the other money or even not in conjunction with the other money. However, we're gonna work on it, so that, that sounds like a very, um. It sounds like a very, very complicated process that we're gonna have to go through to, to work this out properly. Because I, I mean, everything on the list, pretty much everything on the list, uh, makes some kind of sense, maybe not in the dollars that. You know, that are listed or maybe in, in conjunction with other things, um, and we could reduce some of these. Dollar amounts into, you know, the anticipated costs, if we could join them up with other grants, et cetera. So that would be kind of, I mean, the example you gave is a good one, but it's still one and a half million dollars on our end. But maybe there's another grant out there in the infrastructure bill that we could use to offset some of that one and a half million too. Um, so, and you really have to think about this carefully, right? Because you have to decide, you have a timeframe involved, you have the issue of, um. Of, you know, which dollars can go with which things, I mean, I, that's, this struck me as a pretty complicated process for all of us. So I just wanted to make that point, but okay, thank you very much, Jeff, I appreciate your helping, Christine.
Thanks, Dad. All right, Patrick?
Okay, I guess I'm up. Uh, Jeff, I had a question, has any other, how many communities you've worked with?
Uh, we have throughout the country, uh, both municipal and the state level, we have about fourteen clients.
Fourteen, has any of them used their upper money to reduce debt?
You, you, you can't, that, that's one of the, the things, like you can't pay down. Like you can't do unfunded pension liabilities, um, you can't, you gotta be very careful on how you approach it. Uh, there's a lot of limitations.
O P E B is allowed, Patrick, if that's where you're going. O P E B is allowed, but no other debt is allowed.
Correct.
Yeah, this isn't for debt service or anything else like that.
Correct, correct, but O P E B is my uh, target is what, you know, I'm, of course, I'm. As you saw the last, I'm knowing this last, there's a big zero there, so we gotta try, I'm gonna convince you to try to change that. So the question is, ha- have anybody tried to lower their O P E B or? In other cities or towns? Other post employment benefits?
No, eh, they have looked at it, you know, I, I'll be honest with you. Um, from a prioritization standpoint, uh, they haven't necessarily put it as the highest priority. Um, it is something that, that other folks are considering, but no final decision. We don't have any clients that are actively saying. Hey, we're gonna do, you know, O P E B contributions that I can think of off the top of my head. Um, you know, a lot of the focus has been solving underlying strategic issues or, or making strategic advancements. Uh, within, within the communities.
Well, that's why Rhode Island has got uh, four billion in unfunded liability right now, so. Um, Christine, do you have a, did you?
I have a couple of charts uh, to show you. I don't have a bottom line. Number, so to say, because I have to meet with the actuaries to get that information, like.
Understood. Maybe you can walk us through it, some of the questions I had regarding O P E B and reduction of that uh. Liability.
All right, so let's call this up. So on this first screen, oh boy, all these chat things are in my way, um. I don't know how to scroll through this. So I did three scenarios of four point five million, which would be the whole kitty. Uh, a two and a quarter, half of it, and then a one million contribution. Um, I don't know if anybody can help me figure out how to work this screen with all these toolbars and people's faces in the way.
Chris, are you in the application?
I am not, I just have these uh, spreadsheets that I downloaded from it.
Right, so you're, if you're in, you're, go into Chrome or whatever browser you're using, like not in Zoom, just go into Chrome.
Yeah.
Whatever you're using and just navigate that way.
Okay.
So you're, you'll be looking outside of Zoom, you'll just be working on your computer.
Oh.
Oh, so if you share it.
I'm not, I'm not doing very well, am I? Sorry.
If you share your screen and you pick the application, the window you want to show.
Okay.
Then go actually into that, into your web browser, right? Okay, you should be able to do it now.
Still. Okay, that's a little bit better. Okay, I think I might be able to do this now. No, I can't scroll. Um, I have to move you guys somewhere, there we go. All right. So you can see obviously by the, uh, these numbers, again, the first column is the four point five, second column is two and a quarter. And I can't scroll, I can't do this too good here. Oh, all right, I just moved you. I moved the faces out of the way. This is the funding percentage. So when you make that first contribution in twenty twenty three, that's where you see the uh, big jump in the funding going up. The funding percentage, so it goes up, um, about. You know, it takes a big jump in twenty twenty three, and then every year it's about a two percent increase. But you can see the first column is the default, if we did nothing and just kept going as we are, you can see the difference. So in twenty twenty five, instead of being at forty one percent funded, we would be at fifty. And then at two, um, two point two five million, we're about four percent over what we would have been done. Wh- what we would have been if we did nothing. And then if we did the one million, we'd be about two percent higher in funding percentages. Um, and it just, it goes on the whole, it's pretty equal all the way down because you're just making a one time payment.
Right.
Right, so then, um.
Understood.
Yep.
Now, is, um, are we basing a hundred percent funded on the eighty percent funded that, that uh, is, is recommended?
This would bring us, the, over the, I did it over twenty six years, that would bring us to the hundred percent.
Right, which would be actually eighty percent funded.
Right, right, and then you, yeah, then you're like a pay go after, right, right.
Understood, now where, where are we funded now? When I, when I got elected in two thousand fourteen. We were just over sixty percent, and if any town or municipality drifts under sixty percent. The state comes in and takes over, correct?
That's the pension.
Right, okay, all right.
This, this is now, right now, we're at.
O P E B is, right.
Twenty nine, it's almost thirty percent.
We're at thirty percent funded, okay, and, and we should be eighty percent funded for, you know, bond issues. And, and good standing, triple A ratings and all that, right? Does that affect, that, that all affects our, uh.
Well, yeah, yeah, of course it does, yeah, but uh, and across the state, O P E Bs are less funded than pensions right now.
Right, 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 but uh.
But yeah, the state doesn't come in and do anything, that was with the pension.
The pension, right, where, where are we at with the pensions? Even though the pension's something we can't fund with this money.
Now, we, we did very well last year.
Yeah.
I don't have the figures in front of me, but we're. The police pension is uh, ninety, over ninety percent funded.
Okay, good.
And the town pension is, um, I don't know if Dan can remember either.
Just under seventy.
Seventy?
Okay, just under seventy, Chris.
Just under seventy, okay, thank you. So, we did very well last year.
Okay, now the O P E B, you know, right now, what is that, what is that costing us a year? Um, approximate.
Um, if I could get to my other screens, I could tell you.
Right.
Um. Let's just see if I can. This toolbar, bumming me out, okay, actuarial, there we go, let's see where we are. So here we are right now. We're at about three point six million.
Okay, all right. Um, so that's the actual uh, contribution each year, right?
Correct.
Okay, and, and that's not percentage of payroll, is it?
Yes.
It is, okay, and where we at percentage wise, is that like about forty seven percent, somewhere around there?
Somewhere around there, yeah.
Okay, all right, um, okay, my point is, for us to pay down this. Unfunded liability and get it to where it's more manageable for future generations. This will set us up to take care of these other laundry list of projects. You know, this is, this is dead uncle money, okay? This is a one time windfall, that we should be paying down future debt. And, and setting ourselves up to, in the future, take the debt off future generations. And manage our town and manage these projects through bonds or fundraising or, you know. What have you, grants. And while we have this money, I think we should dump it all on the O P E B and get a jumpstart. And, and fully funding this uh, liability. I think that would be the best use for, for, it covers everybody. And then we can chip away at all these other projects. Uh, over the next years.
I, I don't have a bottom line savings, but you can see that, again, the, the first column is where we are now.
Right.
And each year, you do the four point five, it's about a four hundred thousand dollar savings each year.
Correct.
And the two point two five would bring about two hundred thousand and then a one hundred thousand for the, it's just about that, you know, on average.
Understood.
Per year.
Now, that, um, okay, that, that's all I got, that's all, thank you.
I apologize for the slides.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine, it's just what I was looking for, something, you know.
Okay.
I, I appreciate it, so. That's, that's my uh, take on this ARPA money, thank you.
All right, thanks, Patrick. Okay, um, couple of questions. So this could be for, I think this would be for Jeff or Sam. Um, in terms of small business assistance. What have other cities or towns discussed doing uh, to like directly assist small businesses? Using this money?
Yeah, we're, we're actually uh, currently running a couple of grant programs to directly assist small businesses. Uh, they've used it for a multitude of things to respond to local conditions. So one, it could be working capital, uh, you know, to support it, it could be COVID nineteen adaptation. Um, there could be, uh. So COVID nineteen adaptation, we've done it so that they could, you know, with CARES money, last year we did, uh. You know, outdoor dining, supplementing, you know, just trying to keep some of the restaurants up and going. Uh, so it really is, you know, there's a, a good amount of flexibility. Um, the, I know Rhode Island Commerce is also working through a program for small businesses as well. Uh, there is a financial assistance program, uh, there's a. Ventilation, there's gonna be a ventilation program, um, some uh, building upon their ticket outside program. So there's things that were passed in uh, recent uh, state legislation. That your small business is less than a million dollars, uh, in revenue can receive up to twenty thousand dollars to support.
Okay, all right, so that would be outside of the ARPA money, that's just totally separate, right, okay. All right, do you guys work, are you guys working with Providence?
We, we are.
Okay, so they, they have a grant program, right?
Yeah, they have a twenty five hundred dollar grant program, uh, that for small businesses. Um, I will, you know, we've seen, I think, you know, uh, very much publicly on the record that the, the city has provided that out. Um, they did twenty five hundred dollar micro grants, uh, and only about three hundred and fifty businesses have applied. And I think about two hundred and twenty have been eligible for, for the grants, you know, in terms of. The way that the guidelines are put up. So, and some of the feedback that we've received is, you know, it's just not enough money, uh, in terms of, you know, to make an impact.
Yeah, okay, all right, yeah, that makes sense, all right, thank you for that, um, couple of questions. So I don't think Mike DeLuth is on, right?
Now, he had a, a planning board.
Okay, so I guess I'll, uh, I'm gonna address this one to the town manager. Um, Jim, if you know, so I see the extension of the bike path is in there for two million. How are we, where's that figure coming from? Um, because I know we're kind of in flux in terms of different routes and different plans for that.
That originally, that came in originally through, uh. Uh, pox and wrecks in the beach, just as a. It was, it's a wishlist, it was all submitted by uh, Michelle's office to try to, uh. To continue the path, at least find a location from the beach to as close as we can get to the end of the bike path, based on, I think it was based on over road.
Over road, right.
And then went, and the final ruling on, on the funds, if it's lost revenue and government services. We said, we leave it in there as one of the submitted plans of a department head to be reviewed by the council.
Okay, all right, yeah, and Michelle, if you have anything else to say on that, feel free, up to you.
Oh, you're muted right now.
Muted.
Sorry, here I am, um, the only thing that I would like to add to the uh, town managers, um. Sorry, here I am. Um, the only thing that I would like to add to the, uh, town manager's, um, information that he just provided. Is, as you know, um, we do have the linear park currently under review with the DEM twenty twenty-two. Take it outside, uh, open space grant. Um, I believe that, um, there's possibly, again, with further talk. Uh, further meetings, further research, uh, uh, an easier way, a less expensive way to finish the bike path. Or at least come to the determination that the bike path either ends where it is now, and that's the final decision. Uh, but my hope was that if there was a way to possibly extend the bike path from where it stops now. On through existing roadways, basically leading to South County Museum. And then on to the dirt road that exits, um, to the West Lot. Eventually leading to this hopeful linear park. Uh, that was kind of how I was spinning this proposal. Basically bringing the bike path to hopefully the new linear park.
Okay.
Jesse, each of the senior management teams was really encouraged to dig, dig deep and to come up with some projects that would benefit the community. And that we could use this funding for. And everyone, none of them were excluded. Uh, each of them was presented to you folks, uh, in a summary form as a starting point as from here.
Right, right, yeah, no, I, I think I understand that, like, some of these are not totally realized in terms of even having plans yet necessarily. But this is the time to try to, you know, to put in your pitch for whatever your project is. So that makes sense. Um, okay. Let's see, um, the firehouse, two and three. So I know that we had discussed extensively renovations to one firehouse. Um, in the south end during our budget sessions, and we. We agreed basically as a council to not put that in the budget for last year and to potentially use these funds for that. Uh, but that was one firehouse. So what, so two and three are, is that, what is that? Is that the pier in the south end, or is that the north end and the south end?
Chief.
Yeah, Jim, you're muted. Or Chief can come in on that one.
Yeah, I was gonna say Chief's on right now.
Yes, sure, sure, uh, Jesse, just to be able to kind of clarify that a little bit. Um, correct, the, uh, the project is station two, we previously discussed during, uh, capital, um, budget requests and submissions. And it was cut, um, uh, the last, uh, last budget workshop session. Uh, station three is, uh, dealing with mostly space. We, we have absolutely no storage space for, uh, any other vehicles. So what, what's proposed there is additional storage building to be put up, installed behind station three to accommodate that. Right now, there's just a steel Conex box, uh, with some storage there that we put some things in. So, um, in speaking with the, uh, town engineering department, there's, um, a lot of town-owned land there. That would, uh, quite easily accommodate a, a steel storage building. Really, it's, it'd be storage. Uh, for the purpose of accommodating, uh, reserve apparatus. A li- a bit of a workshop to be able to work on them to some minor degree if we need to store other items and things in there as well. Um, and we do have, uh, the potential, we're looking at. Um, for additional funding to be able to supply, uh, supplied through the, uh, fireman's, uh, club. Uh, with additional funding that could support that project as well.
Okay, alright.
So it's essentially looking for, uh, storage, storage room, um, that's desperately needed in, in the department.
Okay, alright, great. Thank you, Chief. Um, let's see, uh, I don't know who wants to answer this one. Four Minute City. Um, I don't, I don't know what that is. It sounds good, but, uh, Jim.
This is, this is a great program, the chief has been working on for quite a while. It's, uh, about getting AEDs to be readily available in the community. They'll be close. They can, they'll be able to identify where an AED is close to someone who's suffering a cardiac event. And Chief, why don't you, you've done all the work on this, so.
Uh, sure, sure, I'd be glad to talk on it. We've been working on this project for a while and it's, um. It's really a, uh, multi-community project, uh, between the towns of North Kingstown, Narragansett, South Kingstown, and Charlestown. So, um, uh, we did a bit of research, we, we're all in need of replacing our AEDs throughout all of our communities. Um, and we're really trying to replace them with the smarter technology, uh, an AED that's lighter, um, smarter. Uh, costs less, less, and it can be easily operated, uh, really by anybody. Um, you just, you don't have to be a first responder and, uh, to operate, uh, this type of unit. And the smart technology is plugged into, uh, the dispatching centers throughout the state. It'll be plugged into the E nine one one center, um, in the northern end of the state. Uh, that will, uh, essentially alert the device that there is a cardiac arrest event occurring. Uh, within a half mile radius or whatever the radius that you set for that, for that particular, uh, event. So, um, it's part, it's a unique opportunity, there are multi, multiple communities involved. Um, and, um, the funding would, would, would fund the initial investment in this project. And then going forward, I, I put that together in the summary, uh, that you have there. Um, we would look for additional funding to support it, either through normal operating budgets within, uh, our town departments. Or we do have some leads on some additional private donations or, um, funding supports through other, um. Uh, associations, um, I know the Lions Club, uh, in particular is very interested in supporting this type of project, uh, going forward. I do, I don't know if you want to see the video that, that's, that's regarding it, Jim, if that's getting too much into it. But, uh, you know, if you click on that link that's in, when, in your summaries regarding the, uh, the project, there was a, a unique. Uh, marketing video that was put together on this, um, so that we could, in fact, solicit, um. To the general public, anybody who wants to donate to this cause, uh, would learn about that project and be able to do so. Um, essentially, it's creating, uh, um, a bunch of AEDs that we can distribute to the community. Um, where they, where they need to go, that are easily accessible, um, not only to first responders or staff, but to the general public as well.
Okay, alright, cool, thank you. Um, then lastly, this would be for, um, John Gerhard. Uh, the water system improvements, so one point nine million. Um, you know, good chunk, but I think water, uh, quality. And all, all things water are kind of probably the biggest amount of communication we, I get from the public. Are concerns with the water system. So what is this, what does that include when you have that, uh, number in there? What kind of projects?
Did you say one point nine or?
Uh, is that what, sorry, I closed my document, um. One point nine, yeah. One million nine hundred sixty-five thousand, water system improvements.
She's out there, um. I think one nine six, my numbers aren't adding up there. Uh, oh, maybe, oh, okay, it's, uh. Sorry, my summary's a little different. I think that.
Oh, the water meter, I guess that would be.
No, not, it's not the water meter, it's the TT.
Yeah, that's, that's the other ones, yeah, sorry, uh, it's, yeah, that's, there's, there's three, uh, projects really. That we're kind of looking at, or three, three, uh, approaches, um, we don't have any real plans for yet, cause we haven't completed all that. With the, uh, the modeling project, but one would be, um, to put some treatment systems into the storage tanks. Uh, which would be an aeration system, which basically you, you bubble air into the tanks and it, and it, and it off gases the, uh, TTHMs. To actively remove them, um, uh, and then another one is to, uh, but when you do that, it, it also takes the chlorine out of it as well. So we'd need some improvements to the chlorination systems, uh, which is the whole problem with TTHMs. Um, so that's, uh. Um, that's the other piece of that. And, and then the last piece is, is an upgrade of the, uh, the control valves to let the water in and out of the tanks. Um, to try and, uh, improve the circulation within the system. Essentially, the, uh, the, the problem with our TTHMs has been. Uh, pinpointed to, or, or attributed to the lack of, uh, circulation through the system and the tanks getting stagnant in there. So it's kind of a, uh, we're not exactly sure what needs to be done, but it's gonna be a combination of these items and that's what those improvements would be. But they're all directed right at, uh, they would all be for the, the TTHM issue we've had.
Okay, so the one point nine would directly address the TTHM issue. And I know you said, it's kind of like you're doing these three. Initiatives, uh, to address it from kind of different angles, but is it like a very high likelihood? That that would address the issue for good? Cause that's really the thing, we could just address this issue. Um, I think that is money well spent. But are you saying that it's very likely that would address it?
Oh, well, yes, like I said, the, uh, we, we could come up with, uh, with the treatment, um, systems in the tanks. And that would remove, that would actively remove the TTHMs from, from the water. Uh, but, uh, and then again, we would have to have the rest of the design project to make sure that we're meeting the, the rest of the water quality and our, and our permitted standards. But the, you know, that would be the most positive way to, uh, to achieve that. Um, and, but the specific method and then the other, the other attributes and the coordination, we haven't gone through those design discussions with, um. With Par yet, in terms of their recommendations. We have some recommendations informally, but we haven't, uh, put those all down and, and made them any more concrete yet.
Okay, alright, great. Thank you, John.
Can I just, can I just say something about that? Um, that, that seems to me like another perfect idea of, um. Melding some money from, from this program and money from the infrastructure program. Because one of the, you know, really important hallmarks of that program has to do with clean water, so. I mean, it's a great, great opportunity to link them together, ca- cause you, it'll take your ti- a long, a while to get the whole concept together, right, John?
Yeah, this, this one is not shovel-ready at all, uh, some of the wastewater projects really are shovel-ready, um, but, uh. But, yeah, that's the, the, the numbers, uh, and the, and the actual amounts for these are, are really more on, you know, the budgetary estimating. Where you have some, you know, twenty-five and thirty-five percent contingency type numbers in there. Um, but, yeah, we, we could look for other sourcing and other funds, um, to, to supplement that as well. We would have more time to, to investigate that as well.
Alright, thanks, thanks Deb for adding that on. Um, then I just have one more question, it's. Pretty much in line with what Deb brought up, so it's a good segue. Um, and this is gonna be for whoever thinks they have the best knowledge on this, feel free to answer it. Um. I'm trying, I'm kind of like struggling a little bit with understanding. What projects to use to focus on with ARPA money versus what projects to hold off on. And, uh, and try to put applications in, um, for, for the infrastructure, federal infrastructure money. That's coming. Uh, I guess my, my hesitation is that. We have this money, this is gar- basically guaranteed four point six million, that we know the town's getting it. I don't totally understand, um, how the infrastructure money allo- allocation is wor- works. You know, that goes to the state who then will funnel it down to the towns, but really, nothing's guaranteed, right? I mean, is there, there's no guarantee an arrogance is gonna necessarily get any of that. So is there a good way to play this strategically, um, without a huge amount of risk? Like, can we bank on any of that money?
Uh, uh, Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think that any of that infrastructure money is coming directly to a municipality. I think that's all for grant opportunities, so you have to explore the grants that are out there right now. And I think some of them have passed already, maybe, um, but you have to apply to get those, uh, funds.
Yeah, and, and I, I think I'll make two points there. Chris is right, nothing's guaranteed as it relates to those dollars. That being said, you also don't have to spend all of your ARPA money right now. You do have a, a couple of years to think about it. If there are priority projects, you know, that are there, um. You know, as, as John, I think, just highlighted, there are some projects that aren't shovel-ready, but it's in your benefit to get them shovel-ready. So, you know, it could be a situation where you do invest some of the funds to get these projects shovel-ready for additional grant funding. If not, fund it yourself later on. Um, so it opens up some additional potential priorities there. Or possibilities, excuse me.
And would some towns like basically designate a certain amount of the ARPA money? Um, to the side to say it's for this project, we're gonna apply for the other half of this through a grant. And then if the grant doesn't come through, you just have to decide what to do at that point?
Yeah, it's completely flexible on, on your end, you know, so whatever you, whatever you want to decide to do, and, and other communities. Um, they've said, hey, these are investments, and then they keep, to keep a contingency fund, you know, for some of those. And, and, hey, these are our investment priorities, this is where we're gonna spend the dollars, and if they happen to get another grant. Awesome. You know, and, and they can return the money back to the contingency spot, and you can look at it later on. You know, uh, you can authorize it and say, hey, go forth and do great things, um. But also look for other grants. So it's, it's, it depends really just what, what you want to weigh it in and, and how you want to deliver the priorities. I think you've heard a couple of things tonight where you can solve issues. You know, I'm always gonna, again, it is completely up to you all, but I'm always gonna be. The person that says, if you can solve an issue, why not? You know, that it's a, it's just a tremendous opportunity to solve an issue that's been a problem for the community.
Yeah, okay, alright, thank you. Um, alright, that sounds good, that's it for my questions. Um, we have about an hour left, so.
Yeah, I got my hand up there, Council President, I just wanna pipe in about the, the water. Alright, I just, John, real quick. Um, the circulation is in, in the tanks at the source, correct?
Uh, yeah, the cer- the circulation issue is essentially, the model shows that we, we pull, we buy our water from Suez. We get it to the tank, but then over time, it doesn't, it, it moves in and flushes in and out. So as we buy more, more water from Suez, it's really just going right to the customers. And it doesn't really get in and out of the tank, so that's, that's the issue on the circulation. It doesn't, doesn't circulate well around the system, so.
Right, right. So you're basically circulating at the source and not treating it down the line.
Um, yeah, it's, well, the, what we would do now is with these proposals. And, and the options were, are to treat it in the tank where it's at. Uh, but, but again, it doesn't, treating it in the tank doesn't necessarily, or doesn't improve the circulation issue. And then it could, again, you could treat it at the tank, but if it's not moving all the way out to the end of the system, uh, that, that wouldn't solve the whole problem. So those are, those are the other aspects that I discussed we have to be looking at as well.
Right, understood, okay, thank you.
Alright, I was muted. Um, what I want to do next is, Chris, do you have anything else that you wanted to say before we move on?
I, it's just, it is a lot, just to reiterate what Deb was saying and what you alluded to. There's a lot of great projects out there, we have a lot of good input. Um, we have a, a healthy fund balance at this point, and, um, it, this budget process is gonna be challenging. But it could be very exciting too, so. Just, you know, this is just a, to get the ball rolling, start thinking, we have our public work sessions. That we're gonna do with each department later in April. Um, and like Jeff said, we don't have to allocate it all right now. Um, maybe we could do the bike path through the infrastructure grants, uh, you know, that's definitely a, a possibility. But it's just to get everybody's brain starting to think about the opportunity we have with this money. That's it.
Yeah, okay, alright, thanks, Chris. Um, so what I want to do next, before we go to the public, I do want to go around quickly. Um, to each department head, to give them just a chance to pitch their big ideas to the council. Um, and again, very brief, cause we, we want to take about maybe twenty minutes going through all the departments. And if you don't have anything you want to say, that's fine too, cause it's, it's already in the document. But if there's anything you want to explain to us, let us know why it makes sense to go forward with it, this would be the time. So I'm gonna go through alphabetically. My last name, uh, we'll start with Chief Corrigan. Um, Chief, is there anything that you want to, um, mention tonight?
I think the, uh, the summaries that were sent to you were pretty self-explanatory. I try to, I try to focus on the issues that. Um, that we, there were effects that we dealt with, uh, during the pandemic and that we see as being potential issues. If, uh, there was be another, uh, downturn with it or some other issue in the future.
Okay, alright, sounds good. Thank you, Chief.
Yep.
Alright, uh, Steve Dagno.
Hello, Town Council, how are you today?
Great, how you doing?
I'm good. So I have two projects on the list. One of them is for Town Hall HVAC. We began this project with the Finance Department to address air quality issues. We've had mold, um, musty air, air quality problems throughout the years. This would solve the issue in Town Hall, not only for air quality, but also it would, um. Improve by having central air, and it would also have an air handler system that does treat. For, um, viruses and whatnot. With COVID and that whole situation, this will definitely. With COVID and that whole situation, this will definitely help. Make purer air for for the town. Um, if we don't do it, we will have continued problems with mold and mildew in the building, possible workman's comp claims. And high utility costs because um. This does work off electric, but what we spend with our window units that we put in, all that stuff just draws on the system more and more. So that's listed at five hundred and fifty thousand. An- another part of it um was, there was talk about the handicap elevator issue. Um, there was a proposal to redo the whole front of the building, that's a whole other can of worms at six fifty. Um, but right now, I think with that handicap elevator issue, that was an expensive option too, that was like eighteen thousand, I believe. Um, also, the Eastwood Look and Vine Estates is the second ARPA Fund project that I have on there for one point five million. Drainage systems in Eastwood Look and Envina Estates, Envina Estates is that upper section of Metta Tuxit. They all have um corrugated metal drainage pipes, and they're all rotted out, the bottoms are gone. These drainage systems have failed, so right now, as it stands with our road reconstruction project. Um, Thorn Apple Leather Leaf and Fern Leaf all within, in Linden Road, which is all in that Upper Envina Estates area. Those projects are on hold right now um because of this drainage issue. Permitting is on hold for Fern Leaf, Linden Road is still in design, Thorn Apple permitting is on hold, and Leather Leaf is is planned to impermit, but it's on hold because. The pipes are all rotted out, need to be replaced, so it doesn't make sense to reconstruct the road with a failing drainage system. Um, so if we're able to replace all these drainage pipes to plastic ADS, then it would make sense to reconstruct the roads at that point. So it it puts some of these roads on hold, and it will solve the issue. That's all I have, if you have any questions, you have it answered.
Alright, thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Alright, uh, next we have John Kerhart. So John, we already went over some of your projects, but if there's anything else, uh, feel free.
Well, yeah, like I said, we 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 discussed the water items, um, and again, these are all pretty straightforward. Um, the other item we did have, I had on there is the uh, the water meter radio read system and the replacement water meters, and that was essentially um. The project has been uh in the works and and uh it been accounted for, but uh, the the issue is always how to re replenish those funds into the into the uh. Enterprise Fund Balance when it comes out, because the water meters are technically uh, the the customers have to buy those. Um, so that was, that's why I put that one on there, uh, but again, it doesn't have as as higher priority as the water system improvements, which which from the water side would be the most most important. Um, and on the wastewater side, uh, we did discuss the um, the outfall groin, that's another project that's been there. Uh, and that that project, um, you know, if you guys said tonight that uh we would have the rest of that money, we would go about uh finalizing, finalizing the grant, getting the other um. Matching loan from the Infrastructure Bank and be able to go out to bid with that right away. Uh, the plans are are ready to go out to bid essentially, so that that project can move forward right away. Um, and and that one does have the uh, the added benefit, it's uh, the the groin structure there, essentially it's the rock jetty at the uh, at the outfall, it's a treatment plant at the beach there, and it does have some uh, some impact to prevent uh. Erosion and and storm damage along the beach, along Scarborough Beach and at the uh, and at the wastewater treatment plant itself, so. That's the primary one, we did have uh home station upgrades and some other projects in there that are um, you know, those. Not necessarily wish lists, uh, but some other items that uh, that would need to be, the that need to get done soon. Um, but they're all, they're all summarized fairly well, and I know we're going to have other hearings on these, if you have any other questions.
Okay, thanks, John. Okay, next, Dan Holland.
Evening, everybody. Uh, we've got three options for the IT Department. Uh, first one is a remodeling of the office area. Um, this is an officer that hasn't been touched since the nineteen late, I'm sorry, early nineteen nineties, when there was actually only one person in the department. Um, this would uh alter the configuration, so all three of the people working in Town Hall would be in the same area. It would further allow for the um locking of both the server and the network area, which is a part of cybersecurity controls. And it also replaced the thirty plus year old HVAC system that we've got down there that has a propensity to fail on us almost on a yearly basis. Uh, would also allow for additional storage and hardware configuration maintenance area uh for their assist admin. Um, and the ramifications, if we don't do this, this is um, I put it down to a lot to cybersecurity, uh, but also cohesion is to the work environment and people working together. And um, better because one of one employees down the hall uh from where we are versus right with us. Um, estimated project cost is roughly two hundred and twenty five thousand on that, bulk of that is the HVAC replacement. Right now, that's one zone, so the servers and the switch rack all tend to run a tad hotter than they they should be, and we can't close the doors because the thermostats in the office area, so it's a bit of a mess. Um, second option was a network access control appliance. This is a system that we're proposing, it's from HP maker of our switch gear. This would further control what a device and or a person logging into our network could do. Uh, we do have some of those controls in place already, but this would be another layer as to what someone can access and or do on the network. Or do nothing at all, as if so, an unknown device actually connects up physically or on the wireless network, they'd be given, okay, you can do X, Y, and Z, oh, we don't know who you are, you can't do anything. Um, it's a uh, it's another step in our cybersecurity. And the third option, uh, I can't go into too much detail on it because it's related to uh critical infrastructure for water and wastewater, but this would further enhance the cybersecurity of those two systems. Um, from the rest of our network, so that's uh what we're proposing, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dad. Okay, um, then we have Lori Kelly from the Library Board.
Hi, uh, thanks for uh giving me a couple of minutes to talk. Um, I understand now that we, the library project fits under loss of revenue, but also in the final rule, which not being mentioned is serving the underserved community. Which, of course, has been really badly affected by the pandemic, and our ongoing project to expand our space and our services with tech. Um, to that community is really, you know, also fits this project very well. Um, also, the ARPA funds will allow us as in, you know, solving the problem, because we have an ongoing project. And we are short funds because of the delay we were put through, and this money, my understanding is, the first tranche has already been received by Narragansett. So this could be money that is not coming out of, you know, the Narragansett taxpayer pocket, but that money allows us to file for state. Olis money, which is not on this federal grant with ARPA, because it's federal money, but it allows us for the entire project. To be filed with the state and start that process of which we all know we get up to fifty percent. So again, we have to show a bucket of money in hand to file with the state, and this really meets that criteria. Because it allows us to jumpstart and, you know, file beginning of March, because the money is already here. Now, I understand there's a lot of worthy projects and um, you know, uh, this money can be used in a lot of different ways, and the library. Just defers to the council, which we know you all support the library, to choose how you're going to fund us, but I really do appreciate being able to speak tonight because. You know, the ARPA is just one more consideration that we, we would like you to look at us and look at this money for. I am disappointed that the way that the um survey went out, that we got a lot of people saying they couldn't fit the library in the survey. And uh, you know, we put up a whiteboard in the library and we got. You know, two hundred responses in ten days, not all for the library, there were a lot of good other projects coming from the people of the town. So I hope we do a workshop where we can get more input from, you know, what people need in this town and how they would use the ARPA money. So that's all, but thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Lori. Um, and we definitely will be doing more, um, you know, public hearings to take input from the residents and the public. Um, Michelle Kershaw.
Hello again, uh, so I had submitted three projects as part of my wishlist, uh, the first project I had already discussed, so my second project was um. A new public announcement system uh at Narragansett Town Beach. One of the chief cons- uh complaints that we receive each year is people in the north end, as well as the middle part of the beach, can't hear the public announcements. Announcements regarding lost children or water issues, uh sharks most recently and things like that, so. I had included that um on my wishlist, uh, because that's something that um needs to be done, it's a matter of safety, a safety issue, so. Um, again, I understand this money should really be vetted towards large projects, but again, I had my chance to uh, to put together this information, so I thought I would put it in. Uh, just in case, and then this, uh, my third project was an extension, uh renovation onto the South Pavilion uh to include a separate sales office. Uh, with a potential attached police substation, it's always been a great concern of mine, the large amount of money uh that we take in each day at the beach. Um, and right now, the beach sales office, the beach manager's office, the egress with lifeguards and all staff are all in that one little spot at the South Pavilion. So I believe for safety, um, we should have a separate designated um sales office uh with an attached police substation. Uh, which again, goes along with our plans again for a a larger police presence at Narragansett Town Beach, not only during the season, but preseason and postseason as well. Uh, included in this plan was additional uh storage, um, the construction of two storage garages underneath this addition. For our lifeguard equipment, um, and other equipment needs for our beach gators, um, et cetera, right now, we. Um, each year, we rent storage containers um to store all of this equipment. Um, so I was hopeful that we could have a project such as this uh to take care of those needs and demands. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Okay, um, next we have uh Scott, Chief Partington. Um, Chief, I know we already went through a few of them, but if there's anything else on there that you wanted to expand on, feel free.
Uh, yes, thank you, yeah, we we touched upon those uh facility improvements at uh Station Two, it's Station Three. Um, we're hopeful we can get them completed somehow, otherwise, um, you know, we're just looking at them further down the road to uh have to correct. Uh, the Four Minute City I touched upon, if anyone's interested in seeing that link, um, I did forward it to uh, to Jim, uh, to the town manager, Jim Tanny, and uh he can uh. Um, he can help you with that link, uh, the video does a great job explaining, explaining what it's about. Um, the other project that I I I didn't speak on yet uh has to do with that large scale project. Um, and it looks at the consolidation of administrative offices uh and services. Um, for the town on the part of the fire administration, fire prevention and code enforcement, along with the building officials' office. Um, we all, we've all worked very closely together, um, we share a lot of the uh, the same common needs uh as far as code enforcement inspections are concerned. So this project involves the um, uh, the consolidation or relocation of those offices into what I believe will be a. Vacant uh library building at some point uh down the road, so I don't know what the plans are are for that building. Uh, but this proposal would help consolidate those offices, bring it into one roof, uh, make it more easily accessible to the public. Uh, provide basically a one-stop shopping service when it comes to uh code enforcement, fire code prevention enforcement. Uh, plan reviews, uh permitting and inspections, um, make it much more eas- easier for the general public. Uh, at large, to be able to do those types of services, uh, make it more accessible to them. Uh, better ADA uh require uh ability uh to get in, get in and out of the offices. Um, right now, you, uh, the the fire marshal, along with the building official, collaborate on a lot of projects together. Um, this should would just make that much easier and bring that all onto one roof and combine some of the technologies that that we use. Uh, it would also look to free up existing office space at Town Hall, I know we all compete for additional office space. Uh, throughout town, throughout all our departments, so this inevitably would free up a lot of office space over at the Town Hall. Um, allow all the departments additional room to expand um their office space and and services as well. Um, and then uh, currently, right now, our fire marshal is um, he's not even really in our building, he's, well, he's in, he's on the police side, so. Um, we have taken one of their offices over on the police side of the building, so we would free that up and give that, give that back to the um, to the police department as well. Um, this is a a large-scale project, uh, two point five million dollars, uh, but that again. Um, expands the overall existing footprint of the current building, um, so that's, in other words, an expansion of the existing building. Um, and all the other structural things that would need to go into that building, the scope of that project can be reduced. Um, nothing says it has to go quite as elaborate to that expansion. Um, but that is just uh, um, something that we're looking at now, so um, that was the other proposal that I had.
Thank you, Chief, okay, I don't know if there's anything under, from the building inspection, the building department? Um, no, okay, doesn't sound like it.
No, there wasn't, Jesse.
Okay, alright, hi Wayne, thank you. Thanks for making it nice and easy on us. Uh, then we have, was there anything from finance?
No.
No, no.
Okay, um, how about from the town clerk, clerk's office?
No.
Okay, and then Jim, was there anything that didn't fall under any department, but is on there that you want to talk about?
No, the uh, Christine had already addressed the uh, the OPEB issues that Patrick had brought up, and that was the only one, we didn't have all the uh numbers at the time of printing.
Okay, alright, thanks. Okay, um, I think one thing that didn't really come up in, from any departments, and I didn't really see anything on the. Um, presentation was just generally. Any programs that would help with affordable housing in town, I don't know if there is anything that we've thought of. That we could directly use this money as a town to help with that, but maybe at the net, when we have the public hearings or the next stage here, we'll have Mike DeLuca, who might be able to. Chime in on that, um, but we can all think about that in the meantime, see if there's any kind of creative solutions for that as well. Um, but why don't we go ahead and. Go to the public, see who is interested in speaking, so go ahead and raise your hand if you wanted to comment tonight. Um, it looks like there's one hand up right now, uh, so Gerald McCarthy. Uh, Dan, is he, are you moving people over?
Yeah, I clicked the button to allow him to speak, oh, there he is.
Alright.
Can you hear, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, um, rather than uh basing your decisions on a wishlist, I would hope that the council would give some consideration. To the capital budget planning process that you've gone through. And of course, one of the projects on there that I'm interested in. Is the library, and I think this is a chance for you, the the library, as you all know. Has been on the capital budget for over ten years, probably twelve to years or more. This is an opportunity to get that job done and move it forward, so thank you for the opportunity that you've given me to speak.
Uh, Jesse, you're muted.
Well, thanks, Gerald. Um, next we have Stanley Wojcicki.
Yes, thanks for allowing me to speak, I know I did uh put some chat words in. So you're probably aware of, my biggest concern, of course, is OPEC, you know, the financial problem, let's say it's. Yeah, let's say it's financially something that we didn't fund or didn't fund properly or whatever. Uh, let's maximize the amount of money we can go in there to fix the problem, so we don't have to wait another twenty or thirty years. So if we could, yeah, let's fix that problem and see how much we can get in there. Uh, and of course, the other serious issues that you hear about is the water and sewer. I heard, I heard Pat say something like six hundred available down there at Scarborough, whatever. Uh, what is the maximum sewer capacity available throughout the town? Uh, have we looked at the number of lots possible that might need to get tied in? And do we have the capacity? Uh, have we seen what we might have to do to increase capacity? But sewer probably is right up there along with the water and water quality, if you will. But uh sewer, I think, has been uh left alone, and I think sewer and water are the next biggest issues we must. Really look at going forward, and we need to kind of focus on that, focus on money there. And then if we have extra money, do some of this other stuff. Although I did, I do agree with the IT also, we've got to get IT right. You can't have hackers or you can't have problems with IT. That's something new that I'm not familiar with, but I know that's important. We just heard about Trump being hacked into. And if he can get hacked into, I guess, in the future, we don't want to have the possibility of being hacked into or messed up in our computers. So that's, that's, that's in line also. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stanley. All right, next, we have Casey.
I'm muted.
We can hear you.
Okay, cool. Um, I just, I want to start by saying, I hear a lot of stuff that's going on in the town that needs some help with fundraising efforts. You can always feel free to reach out to me or any other business because I think the majority of our businesses in this town want to support our community. So if anybody needs help with that kind of stuff, I think we're always here. It's difficult for me, public speaking is not a great thing. I always try to make a list, and sometimes I do well, sometimes I don't. But one thing with this pandemic is that it's hit all of us really hard the past couple of years. And I think everyone's been affected in some type of capacity. Our seniors that are coming towards the end of their life, they're not being able to spend time with their loved ones and their family. Our students that have been scared and having to wear masks in the classroom, the teachers, our healthcare workers, our businesses that have been affected by nonstop restrictions. And on the business capacity, it's like we have constantly dealt with the restrictions that have put things in place that we can't properly run our businesses. We've dealt with supply chain issues, we've dealt with inflation, we've dealt with price increases, we've dealt with the labor shortage. But one thing in that too is also the, in trying to find help right now, it's hard because our, our employees can't afford to live in the town. So it's really hard to employ workers that can't afford to live in the town or the surrounding community that they live in. And that's a real part of this crisis that I think Jesse touched on partly, but the affordability of housing. In order to live in Narragansett right now, realistically, you need to make twenty five, thirty dollars an hour. I've lost quite a few employees that I had for years because they were forced out of their houses. They were put on the market during COVID and sold for a hundred thousand dollars over the asking price. Right now, I have one current employee that did just find a place, but when he was in the market and searching for one, there was a couple that came in from New York and offered hundreds of dollars over the asking price for rent. So these are all things that we really have to consider going forward. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Casey. Okay, anybody else from the public interested in speaking? All right, Harry Schofield.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I would just like to echo those that placed the sewer and the water and the storm drains as really the top priority. I have no doubt you could spend all of it there, and I really believe you should, because that is the basic spine of the town. We need to keep the beaches and the ocean clean. And I know those systems are at capacity and, you know, I know the storm drain system has got the whole series of problems of its own. And it seems to me it would be helpful if, 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 I don't know whether, you know, who exactly in the town would do it, but it would be, I think, helpful to residents to have the specifics of, of the repairs to these systems that would be funded with this, you know, money mapped out in at least enough detail so the public could see what it is needs to be done and what it is going to cost to do it and how you would go about doing it. So I think my, you know, suggestions and, you know, hopes are that you really spend all of it there because I'm sure you could. But I would have to say, and I sent you an email to this effect, the last thing I'd like to see you spend any of it on is the library. I think the library has been poorly managed, that whole project has become a boondoggle, I think. And while we all want a nice library, including me, I think that the library board is a victim of its own incompetency. And, you know, they just going to have to find the money themselves to finish the project they started. But I do think the infrastructure, this is to me a great opportunity for you to get behind it and get it fixed without a big hit to the taxpayers. Thank you.
All right, so some time left. Anybody else? I see Casey's hand is, I don't know if that's backup or not. Casey, did you want to speak again?
Yes, please.
All right, go ahead.
I just have a quick question with that too, because I'm concerned, I'm a Narragansett resident as well as a business owner, and I've been very concerned with the water issues and water quality that we've had going on. I'm just curious as to what the obligations are to SUEs to provide the infrastructure needed to provide us all with the water quality that we need.
All right, John, are you on, is John still on? I don't know if he's on, actually.
Hit the jump off, Jesse.
Okay, all right. So yeah, Casey, I don't know if we're going to have a answer for you on that. I don't want, I don't think anyone wants to say the wrong thing.
The basic answer, without getting into the weeds on it, is that SUEs has an obligation to provide water of a quality below a certain, as pots per billion, I believe it is, when it gets delivered to Narragansett. And that's the most basic requirement and to service any of the damages to any of the lines of theirs. If you want, I can circle back with you, Casey, give you more details on it during the week.
All right, anybody else? All right, I guess I'll give Stanley a chance for round two as well, since we did for Casey. Stanley?
Thank you very much. What I neglected to look at is, is this money, is there money available that will help or could fund our budget so we don't see an increase? Okay, that's, let's say COVID, you know, we have COVID problems, we have people with money problems. And is there some way that there will be funding out there to result in no tax increase for the residents next year? Thank you, thank you very much for letting me speak again.
No problem, Stanley. All right, okay, looks like that's it from the public. Just want to go around and see if there's any other last comments from the council.
I just, I just want to thank all the departments for their presentations and to Chris for putting this together. Jeff, Sam, thank you very much, very helpful.
Thanks, Susan, Eva.
Thank you to everyone, definitely a lot to think about, a lot of good projects. We're going to have our work cut out for us, figure it out. But I'm looking forward to hearing everyone's opinions when we do our public hearings. I look forward to hearing from our residents.
Thanks, Eva, Dan.
I'm just going to echo what Susan and Eva said. I want to thank everybody. It was really very enlightening to hear what you had to say about these projects. I did read through them all, so, you know, it was really good to get, to get the details. Thank you, Jeff and Sam, for, for helping us, you know, understand some of this stuff. And Chris, great job.
Thank you, Patrick. You're muted.
Okay, OPEB number one, water number two, sewer number three, totally in agreement. Pay down the OPEB will save us money in the future, future taxpayers, four hundred thousand a year, you saw the chart. It's a good investment, it'll set us up to do bond, bond issues to take care of these other problems. So I'm hoping we can do a one lump sum payment. As far as the library, the, I'm total supporter of the library, but the die has been cast. Five point eight million is what the town committed. As far as I'm concerned, a deal is a deal. I think there was some talk of using some of this money as a placeholder. I don't know if we could do that to jumpstart their project and get that money back. But again, we, we committed the taxpayers, the five point eight. That's what I'm embalmed for, that's what we will support. And the fundraising, once they get that thing going, the fundraising will come. So sit tight and we're going to go for a ride here, the opera ride. Thank you.
You lost me at the end there, but that was good. All right, yeah, so Chris, anything to close with?
I, I just want to reiterate, I mean, I know there's a lot of projects out there, but we have different funding sources. We don't have to just think of all this as ARPA. You know, it's good to, we have a six year capital plan that we, you know, we have, we could think how that could work. We could go to bond for some projects in the future, you know, we have elections coming up. Maybe we could go for a generic bond out there in a year or two, and we can look for other funding sources. So there's many moving parts. We also have fund balance that we can talk about during the, the budget sessions.
Right, thanks, Chris. Jim, you have your hand up, did you want to speak?
Yes, just briefly, I want to thank the staff that put all the efforts into trying to determine what programs will be best for the, for the community. And also Jeff and Sam for the services and guidance they've provided to us. And they've been very responsive to Christine, the finance office, initially through COVID, and now as we are navigating the ARPA funding. And it is appreciated, and it's definitely a benefit to the taxpayer, and the council should be glad that they retain them. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Jeff and Sam, was there anything else that you wanted to say before we go?
No, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, so I just wanted to thank the council for being here tonight, the staff, Chris especially, for leading this, Jeff and Sam, and then, of course, the public for logging on and participating as well. Thanks again, have a good night, we appreciate it. See you all soon.
Take care, everyone, have a good night.
Good evening.